All right.
But you know, we're not touching you on it.
I was like, that's.
So.
Yeah.
It's.
No, it's.
God.
Good.
Actually, I can't.
It's nice.
I'm really sorry.
I don't know.
I know.
I was gonna do.
So then if you did my old.
Company's not working.
Yeah, it's just.
So, sex.
Me, with my spine.
That's what's.
I know.
You have this.
I don't know.
You have a.
That's fine.
I just thought it seems probably okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wanted to go.
I'm actually doing it now, so.
So it's not like.
Yeah.
Feel the better.
Our.
They're like.
This is me.
See me.
Here we go.
Those are important.
Called me to order. If you would. Your indication for Scott.
Father, we just started meeting tonight. First, welcoming your presence because you first loved us. May our decisions honor your presence here tonight, Lord. And we just, we pause a moment to remember those on this day, nine eleven, two thousand and one, Lord, that were called home way too early. Just ask your blessing on their family. Tonight, Lord. Bless our time together. May our decisions reflect you. In your name we pray.
Okay. And join me for pledge. We do.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its extent, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. If you do the roll call for us, please. Here.
Nola.
Here.
Christie.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Tracy, here.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Two things here. One on the agenda already is removing the previous deputy clerk from the bank accounts. The banks like to have meeting minutes from. Minute. A meeting on this type of thing. But we also have a next employee coming in for deputy treasurer. And so she should be added to the bank accounts. Makes no sense to me until next month. So it would be right after, at the bottom of the decision items, right after leaf blower, we can add Amy Brown as a motion to add to the bank accounts. And then next, last year, Melinda Pago had requested through the Daughters of the American Revolution for us to pass a resolution for Constitution Week. We did that last year. She just got me the request today. I included in here at the places for the board, that same resolution just updated for this year. So we can add that below Amy Brown. Also included at the spots for the trustees are two meeting minutes. And these were for working sessions on gypsy slash bungee malls that weren't included in the packets. And then two pieces of paper about maintenance, about the grounds and equipment. So we're gonna come up in a little while. Few things that were left to the trustees up there. If we have a motion to approve the agenda with the two items add.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with two items add to it.
Motion by Nola, do we have support? Support. Support by Lee and discussion among the board. Any none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next, we have approval of past meeting minutes. And because we had a special meeting, a regular meeting in the two working sessions, there are technically four different meeting minutes. Can be approved separately or altogether, if somebody would like.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes with the added meeting is added to that.
Okay. So the regular meeting minutes, the special meeting and the two working sessions. Motion for all four adds.
That's.
Motion by Nola.
Support.
Support by Christie and discussion among the board. Any none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next, we have the treasury reports. If you would, Christie.
Um, we have a current funds balance in the general fund of nine hundred fifteen thousand forty-five ninety-six. We have interest up to five point four-four percent in all Michigan class accounts. We're going to create a bit of interest. This total interest for the month of August was seventeen thousand eight twenty-eight twenty.
Any questions from the board or we'll put it on file? We'll put that on file. Next, we have paying the bills. Four pages of bills here. Like make motion. Motion by paid it.
Support.
Motion by Michael, support by Nola and discussion among the board. Any none, we'll call vote.
I vote.
Yes.
Nola, yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Christie.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department reports. If you would.
I'm just good for that moment. That's just the worst day in history.
Yeah.
Recent years, but we don't, more people look at the fear of forty-three that were killed. And I'm just going, yeah, we, a group of us just walked for ten stories over the weekend to remember more of that. But what we talked about is that fire service, actually, it was our best rescue ever. We saved over twenty thousand people that day.
Wow.
Those guys did an amazing job, so that's why we do it. So I just thank you for taking that moment. It's a pretty special day to us. I remember I was on duty that day. I was in Illinois, obviously, but we watched the plane hit the buildings.
Yeah.
I vividly remember my last time was we're not going home. Basically, we don't want to go home. Those who don't know, one of the planes that was actually heading out had just taken off and got grounded right away. It was actually heading towards the Superstar. So we were next in line. So it's always been kind of a, I'm just glad we had that day. So thank you for that, for that brief moment. So sixty-nine calls last month down to Skosh, but not bad. Been very busy with a bunch of new toys. Not too good. That time of year. The Rocon trail bike has been ordered. I just like the way I know it should be here by the end of this month, but it's not a big deal. It's just they're waiting for, get painted. It's gonna be take a little longer to paint it. Much of anything. With the last meeting that we did have a special meeting in regards to rebanding the firehouse. Everything is on target. As the roof stopped because of the rain, but it happens that they ensure me it'll be done. They're hoping by this weekend, but either way, we're still actually ahead of schedule. The only thing, other thing we're gonna do in the future, obviously, it'll probably be towards the end of the budget year, is we will buy the new appliances. Like I said, that maybe all the appliances are thirty years old. I mean, we need to get that, I do. I mean, you wash or dry, maybe a bunch of little things, but I'm going around seeking bids and I found all five name brands at a package deal for only three thousand dollars. So it's not gonna be something I need to come to the board with. It'd be a crazy thing to do. So we are kind of in a melee over there. We're very precise in how we do things. And I laughed at you guys when you're having your ability redone because I didn't have both of that struggle. My mind has come back to haunt me. The tortoise over there, I can't, I can't stand it. We only got another, probably three weeks and we'll be done. I mean, we'll be done. They ensured me it'd be done before the fire prevention. That's my last week in my report is that I've seen, it's another stuff with that. I'm doing the work on it. Annual open house, it's on Wednesday, October eleventh. Forecasted to be decent weather, cold, but not raining like last year. But from six to eight P M, the usual, the hot dogs, the staff all comes together and feeds everybody. We have the chips and the donuts. Yes, we're buying the Wesco donuts, so please don't get mad at me because we didn't get Wesco one year. I was gonna get fired. I mean, my Wesco donuts, we bought cookies and, yeah, that's right. It's okay. We've learned our lesson. We'll always buy Wesco donuts. So we're pretty excited about that. The staff's been real happy. Things have gone really, really well, even with us being a little discombobulated. As I spoke to supervisor, if I may ask, I'd like to be excused after this second call. It's anything you can do. I just wanted to give my report because there's anything else that could ask for me or in your later on agenda.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
You're sure?
I don't. I don't.
Okay. Why do you have to be sure?
Our interest is three seventy-five State Road. I don't know if the question was ever asked, you know, we just got this new piece of equipment or we're getting it.
Mm-hmm.
And it probably was asked, but I wasn't around, but who maintains the trails? And why weren't they maintained to the point where the vehicle that we had would still be able to get down in there? So now that we had to buy another vehicle to.
The U S Forestry Service owned it. And the U S Forestry Service decided this area needs to be for motorcycles only, not all open O R B.
Gotcha.
So if you go to like all windows are open O R B, they restrict them to fifty inches or less. They, that's their choice.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, greatly appreciated.
Anything?
We can use that for the horse trail videos or anything.
We, funny thing to bring on this, Richard, it's a, but case, we have a, recently had an issue, though it's not ours, is what's called the sugar bowl or whatever goes with that, South of Sand Dunes. During the winter, people get up there and they go hiking, which I don't like. Hike, but whatever. Do you? They hike and then they fall down. And we can't get up there. Say we, no agency has a device that can get up there except manually. And we have to stop it. It's sort of, we can drive in a little bit. The one year, it took us about two hours to belay these people down the side of the frozen tundra to get them to get into a vehicle. But this new one, we'll be able to assist them. I think we'll be able to get right up to them. I mean, I would be highly surprised if we couldn't. It, it, right, it's gonna be somewhere to try out this year. We don't have to use it, but it's gonna benefit the entire county again, so.
Wonderful.
But I do appreciate that. And that was a big reason why I didn't, the last two rescues, we did have, we had to physically stop and walk a mile in to get the person, put him in a basket and drag him by hand up that mile.
Were those in the same week?
Uh, about a week. Uh, one was on the fifteenth of June, sixteenth of June, and the other one was right about fifteen days apart.
Wow.
So, and, and we, it was, it was tough. I, those of you that are hard, you, I've dragged, you dragged a deer. I get it. I, I've never dragged a deer. Never been dragged one again. Was that? Fuck. Yeah, so I, this just makes sense.
Yeah.
Anything else for chief? All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go, folks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have planning commission reports, if you would leave.
Actually, it was after that meeting, but it was on August twenty-ninth. And the first item was a public hearing for, oh, gosh. Special use twenty-three dash oh-six and site plan review twenty-three dash ten for forty, fifty-seven Central Road for a child group, childcare home. That's the, the whole reason why we're doing that. Ordnance change is for them because there, there's two group childcare homes right next to each other. And it was, in our ordinances, they couldn't do that for some reason. It's not state law that you have to be so far apart from another childcare home, so that's why we opened up that ordinance and motion was approved. Second item was site plan review twenty-three dash eleven for twenty-nine eighty-five Whitehall Road for Kate's Transport. Motion was approved as their plan meets the standards of ordinance. And then third item, site plan review for forty-four, five, four, West McMillan Road for cursed disposal. They're adding an office building in front of the service garage that they added in the last year. Motion approved. Plans are fine. Then the last item is draft ordinance twenty-two-three dash eleven for accessory dwell, dwelling units, black lot and minimum dwelling requirements. Another to look at, awarding for changes that were suggested last month and approved for the public hearing next month.
Perfect. Thanks. Thanks. We have the maintenance and grounds reports, and we're gonna cover the week later. You can mention this one, a bigger discussion there. You wanna go ahead, Nate? I think with the new setup, you might as well present from there.
Oh. Yeah, pretty typical month. Things are starting to wind down, but it winded up at the same time. We got the transfer station where I've been, the personnel change out there again. The new guy, I, it sounds like a straight shooter. It's gonna be a good add to the team. Like I said, this fall, these are about to fall, so there's a proposal for a new piece of equipment that is really good. So we'll get with that early later, but these are gonna be a pain this, this year, I can already tell. A new foot leg sign is installed and the old one's hanging up in the breezeway here. The new one turned out great. I don't know if anybody's seen it, but it looks great. We're gonna add some more rocks to it tomorrow to make it finish. Yeah, snowplowing coming up. Got the new equipment all ready to go, so. That's about it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have our first public comments. If anyone would like to comment on the agenda item, there's quite a few decision items, quite a few discussion items. Any of those free to come up. Let us know who you are. So we'll start the timer in three minutes. Any answers? All right. So second comment at the end of the meeting, of course, is Bailey as well. We'll move on to our decision items. The first one is township hall hours. So this change we made a few months ago here changed from Monday to Friday, nine A M to four thirty P M to now, it's Monday through Thursday, eight A M to five thirty P M. Especially at first, you know, it's still coming in on Fridays or sometimes, right? At full hours. And a number of people were showing up and even going through the taxes recently, a number of people were showing up on Fridays. I think that a major change like that would probably take about a full year for people to get used to. I, you know, I think it's reasonable for the employees and for the citizens. Not too many people have seemed to use before nine A M, which I think would work good for some people, especially going to office jobs. So they need to get something approved to come in early for paperwork and somewhat after as well. So I'm fine with it either way. I do think that we shouldn't keep changing it because that, that ends up being the most confusing.
How are the workers liking it? Guys that are here like that? Do you guys have preferences?
The only thing that I think Heather and I have seen is amount of work that we have to catch up on from like mail, Friday, Saturday, and then Monday, we get three days, we get three days worth of mail. And one of us just works on mail while the other one waits on customers. So the only thing that I would say it's not a big deal, but we just have to play catch up and stay on top of it. But the mail at this time of the year, I mean, mail will go fifty, fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand every day. Just in mail. So.
Do you like having Friday talk?
That's, that's a big thing. I mean, like. It's, it doesn't. Either way, either, either way for me, I'm okay.
It's nice to be able to put appointments on Friday and not, you know, interrupt.
Yeah.
Day.
Right. Now you're gonna have to schedule around where.
Lot's there.
Me?
Yeah.
I, I like having the Friday and also have noted with transitions and stuff lately, it's also nice to come in on Friday when you're not having the traffic of people coming to the building to catch up on things that we might not be able to do when people are coming in now and be able to have a few hours of focus time, so. And that's also been nice to me as well.
I like. So I make a motion to continue with the regular township hall hours as Monday through Thursday from eight A M to five thirty P M.
Motion by Nola, do we have a sport?
Support.
Support by Tracy and a discussion among the board? Roll call of vote?
Nola, yes. Tracy, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Christie. Michael.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have planning commission appointment. Kevin Ferguson is currently on the planning commission. When we appointed him, it was because someone was moving from the planning commission to the zoning board of appeals. So that term is finished. That's why we're seeing it in such short order. He's done well onboarding himself, doing the research, looking through his packets. So I think he's fit well in the position. This would be to extend him for a full three-year term, which is the normal term on a planning commission.
What is the day and month that the term begins?
That's a good question.
Okay.
I would say from now. So, but I, I written, I written neither one of them up with a specific day and month.
Are they normally like a December first or?
No, because they, they should be like the board review has specific dates that it operates from for your terms. As far as the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, it can be whenever it happens to be. So we should have from Steger, which I've attempted to do, although they get a little messed up by their Steger. But there's not a specific timeframe that they have to be throughout the year or throughout the month.
Well, just so that we, because in three years, we just, we need to know when it ends, so.
Correct. So if we.
Against today, it would end.
Yeah, if we do it as of now.
Today. So I make a motion to appoint Kevin Ferguson to the planning commission for a full three-year term, starting today.
Motion by Nola. Support.
Support.
Support by Lee and a discussion among the board? Any none, we'll call vote.
Nola, yes. Lee.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Christie. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have zoning board of appeals appointment. Marvin Nash is on there currently. He did a few years as an alternate. And then when someone left the zoning board of appeals, we proved him up to the full position. That's, it's a similar situation in that he was filling out that term. I was keeping track like a three-year term, and so I missed it by a few months, but you just continue in that role. So, but you wanna get that squared away, so it's the same thing for a three-year term.
I'll make a motion to appoint Marvin Nash to the zoning board of appeals for a full three-year term beginning today.
Motion by Tracy, any way of support? Or support by Scott. Any discussion among the board? Any none, we'll call vote.
Tracy, yes. Scott.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Christie.
Michael.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the land bid opening on Middle Lake Road. This is the one that we put up for a minimum of five-five dollars last month, and we do have one bid. So, but it is in my box in my office. We're at sort of the time. Well, I'm turned. This is all suspense. He planned. So it's just suspense. Didn't have your bid in?
I saw it. You should have a couple of worries. No way. Well, because it just says the parcel number and we were selling it for five hundred dollars. So we were, I'm like, hey, yes.
Hundred bucks.
Well, right, Middle Lake Road is, yeah, it's, it's. For the lake's property.
There's no. Yeah, see, I'm.
I know.
Applause.
Oh, no.
I always want to provide you.
It's way true that I don't, I don't forget anything. So, and the bid is four or five hundred dollars exactly for this piece of Middle Lake Road, which, update, is a very small piece. I have the map in the packet. It's a small, non-buildable piece. That was requested by a neighbor. And I checked, because this goes over a drain, that was one of the other important things. I checked with the drain commissioner that this was not a piece that she wanted or needed reserved or anything like that.
I make a motion to accept a bid of five hundred for a question on Middle Lake Road. Support.
Motion by Nolas. Support by Christie and the other discussion among the board? Any none, we'll call vote.
Nola, yes. Christie. Tracy, yes. Lee.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the first step in the land bid process. It misses for three small parcels, Chicago in Michigan, up near the village in that direction. And the first step of this process, first step, three-step process, is to determine if the board wants to put them up for bid and our process for determining a minimum bid, which would be at next month's meeting. We have traditionally been doing Realtor comparables, you're wanting Realtor that's agreed to do this for us for free, and the true cash value that is centered. I think that's a reasonable way to do it.
Yep. I make that motion to use the Realtor and the assessor to consider setting the bid for the three reference parcels on Chicago.
Motion by Nola, second. Motion by Michael. Any discussion among the board? Any none, we'll call vote.
Nola, yes. Michael.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Lee.
Yeah.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Christie.
Passes. Next, we have the village tax rates. So this comes up every year, even though it's been approved. They essentially pass it to send it to the county. And this list is just for the township itself. So it's township revenue. So there's more on the taxes when it goes to schools and that type of thing.
Okay. Mention of the new, that is, for the fire protection.
Yes, and that is true.
Protection.
Yep. So because it was passed separately, because of the way the laws are set up, that if you go over five mils, has to be listed out separately. So that increases seen on here of the point eight-five mils. And we'll be working on that process over the winter, getting new firefighters hired and a full-time position hired, starting in the next budget year, which begins April first. You have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the no trades for the whatever.
Motion by Christie.
Support.
Support by Tracy. Any discussion among the board? We'll call vote.
Christie, yes. Tracy, yes. Nola.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Lee. Michael.
Yes.
Passes. Next, we have abandoned roads deeds. And so this process, and I'm not familiar with the entire process, but there are rights of ways that aren't developed in a decent portion of the township. In this case, the owners of the parcels around this have gone to the road commission. They've gotten the road commission, the board to pass approving abandoning these rights of ways. And when that happens, they deed that over to the township. The normal process is for the township to deed it to the adjoining landowners. I asked the lawyer exactly how to go about that process because I thought it first went to circuit court after that. That's apparently a different step that the landowners have to take. And so this resolution is written so that these pieces in particular, when they are given to landowners, can be done. Essentially, if a right of way that no one owns, now the adjoining landowners will split it.
Make a motion to approve this, like, person to allow abandoned rights applying to revert to adjoining landowners.
Motion by Nola. Any support? Yep. Support by Michael. Support by Michael. Any discussion among the board?
It sure is that there's no usable reason for those. Fire, electric, utility, stuff like that. Next, you know, I'm just.
Right. So I mean, as far as the electric and utilities and that type of thing, not not one hundred percent certain. I didn't check with those companies or anything like that. Normally, if you're going to have a development, so if different people were going to own the different parcels, obviously, then you'd need access for the utilities and for the roads. And they'd have to develop it. But if one person owns those things and wants to essentially eliminate those, or they're getting access from a different location, and they are eliminating their option to get so much of that.
Aren't these all in the Village of Lakewood Club, too?
They're near the village.
They're near the village. Yeah. And so, you know, I live in the village and my street address, the road has never been developed. And trying to get pizza delivery. She's saying.
I mean, it's a reasonable question. And so, and I I'm not one hundred percent certain that one of those developments couldn't apply for that reason. Anything else?
Legal description and new forward for like the assessor would have to split that and then join it. So now it's new legal description, new deeds, new everything.
Correct.
Probably.
Otherwise, we would own the tiny little
Rested yourself in the strips.
That were that are planted.
So there's at that point, there's still essentially a right-of-way. It's just not for roads. It's for the township. We ourselves, it would make sense for us to develop roads that would have financial trouble to host that.
Are any of these roads being used currently? Like, are we like as a two-track or a driveway that we're now gonna give it to people?
Or isolate somebody that might be using them.
Yeah, like landlocked somebody.
People might be using them for two-tracking. We have a large amount of that.
But not like as their driveway.
So I don't, yeah, I don't believe anyone's using it for those types of things. And I mean, the road commission, if the road commission thought it was needed for any use as far as their or access for driveways or roads, then they would have denied it.
Yep.
So in this case, I was largely taking their recommendation as far as that goes. Anything else? Roads are highly, uh, highly made of thing, for sure. So we have a motion in support. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Roll call vote.
Noah. Yes. Michael.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Christie. Tracy. Yes.
Motion passes. Next we have parks and recreation plan. And Christie had pointed out, mentioned that at the end of this year, the parks and recreation plan comes up and it expires through its twenty-twenty-three term. And it would be good to have in place, especially, you know, if she wants to apply for, uh, different funds and those types of things, need something like that in place. This motion is simply to push it to the planning commission to start that process, and hopefully that occurs over the next few months. And essentially, we can be wrapping that up, uh, while we go into the master plan review, which is going to be a big thing leading into next year. So this motion is just to start the planning commission reviewing the parks and recreation plan.
I make a motion for the planning commission to review the parks and recreation plan.
Motion by Michael. Just a smart. Support by Noah. Any discussion among the board? Here and done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a bank account access. So this specifically is removing the bank account access from the deputy clerk, which moved to another municipality. Uh, I put on here choice one specifically because they are the ones that like the meeting mats. Also, but other bank accounts in case I run into another financial institution that requests a mat that already exists.
I make a motion to remove Lexi Stibbs from the choice one and unbanked.
Motion by Noah's. Support by Christie. Any discussion among the board? Here and done. Roll call vote.
Noah. Yes.
Christie. Yes. Tracy. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Lee.
Motion passes. Next we have cemetery form. And this will be double-sided, but because of the way that I print out the packet, single-sided, uh, is the way it looks in here. And Heather is going through the ordinances, reviewing those. We might see something in cemetery in the near future. The assignment of burial permit was a form that did not exist here. So she created that. And then there's also updates to the right of burial certificate for a couple of reasons. One, it was confusing, some of the way it was written. But also you need certain phrases, uh, for the legal aspect of it. And she worked with MTA, reached out to them, had them double-check on the wording on this. Uh, and this is the solution. To make those better. Did you want to add anything to what I just said, Heather? Perfect.
I'm kind of curious. Right here it says ordinances, rules and regulations locally made that are now in existence or that may hereafter be authorized. That means everything is subject to change. So even if somebody were to buy a burial plot, it's subject to any ordinances now, but if somebody wants to come along and change the ordinances, then they all of a sudden don't have it what they purchased into.
It would be very difficult to keep track of sign under what ordinance is. And so most of our ordinances are, um, meant for maintenance or decorative purposes. Um, so like solar lights.
Yeah.
We want, if we decided, yes, solar lights, and then decided later on down the road, no to the solar lights, which just means you'd have to remove them if they're out there. Um, but it's not anything that would be a major, like major, major ordinance change. Most of ours, again, are just strictly for maintenance or or decoration. Um, another ordinance that might, I could foresee being a problem with that is the changing of headstone sizes. Like if we were to allow, um, different stone sizes that were allowed previously, people being upset about that, but um, they they change just like our our ordinances change, so.
If someone bought a plot at a certain time when you authorized a certain size of headstone, it would seem to me that they would be grandfathered into whatever the the rule was at the time of purchase.
And we do have exception forms. So if somebody were to come in and say, I bought this plot back in nineteen eighty-two and the size was aligned at this time, I have to copy the ordinance. And I could say, okay, let's fill out this exemption form. You're allowed then to go ahead and and fulfill that. So there are ways around it, but it's that wording is there specifically so that if we do change something that is, um, inhibiting our maintenance group from being able to do something, they can't say, well, I am on the ordinance from nineteen eighty-two, so I don't have to do that.
Well, it's like myself, I've I've already purchased the headstone for where I'm going to be buried, and that's under the ordinances that are allowed in in the cemetery that I'm going to be buried in. So if they made a change, that would really put a damper on.
Yeah, and I think like, yeah, uh, there's except there's reasons why those forms exist to give people exa- um, exemption, obviously, within reason. I mean, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's that's a good point about the sizes. You know, I think when we look at those ordinances, too, we have to keep that in in mind.
I make a motion to approve the right of burial certificate and assignment of burial permit forms. It's liquid. Beautiful.
Motion by Noah. I think Michael got the support. It was close. Directly opposite on the far ends. Any other discussion among the board? Here and done. Roll call vote.
Noah. Yes. Michael.
Yes.
Tracy. Yes. Scott.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Christie. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next we have the leaf blower. And a few things were included here. The quote was from last year, but we had confirmed this with the company, uh, that the quote was still good. So prices stayed the same. It's less than ten grand. The question here is for eleven grand. This is a little bit of a buffer, because we've run into before where some little part wasn't included on the quote, and that can throw us off. Uh, and also, these were two sheets that they had made up and provided for us to get over the acreage for land here and the comparison of one of the backpack blowers and one of the riders.
That's two backpack blowers.
Okay, yes, two backpackers. So if you want to hit on this a little more.
Sure. I'll also add to that ordinance thing. Uh, I mean, like she said, maintenance, there's like solar lights. If I zap one of those with a weed whacker, there's a reason there's certain things that are allowed and not allowed. Yes. It'll change, you know, because I might realize, can't have that anymore, you know, for whatever reason. Yeah, so I have these two sheets here. Uh, they're pretty self-explanatory if you go through them. It's pretty crazy, actually. Once I started doing the math today and figuring out how, uh, how much the hurricane will pay for itself. I know it's it's a steep price, but Jeff and I went over the GL, and I think it was allotted for thirty thousand this year, and I saved a lot of money not purchasing certain things. We thought we were going to save money with trading in the truck for the plow. Um, I just figured it would be a big plus. Uh, I've spoken with K and J Farms, which is who's the vendor in this situation, and uh, Reese Pucker Schools bought one last year, and they ordered five more this year. And they're ten thousand. Well, they're originally fourteen thousand, but we get a twenty percent discount. So it's a big plus there, but that tells me right there that they work really well. Um, State Park, Muskegon State Park just ordered like five of them also and had to get the smaller sizes of blowing the sod off the ground. So they're they're really great. Just the backpack leaf blower, it's not the only way we pick up leaves, but it's the majority of how we handle our picking up of leaves. But just one backpack blower is nine hundred seventeen CFM. I don't think I put that on there, but that's cubic feet per minute. Uh, the new unit is sixty-five hundred CFM. So it's seven times more airflow. Um, the fuel consumption alone is huge, because the reason fuel is so high on these backpack blowers, because as you probably know, they're two-stroke. Say, not two-stroke oil is not free. So and it goes through a decent amount there. But, uh, the labor costs are astronomically different. So I'm, I don't know, I'm just, I think it would be a huge help, um, because leaves fall and they don't only fall at one location. You know what I mean? So it takes us three, four days to do one cleanup's worth of just the Twin Lake Cemetery. And then by the time you're done, you gotta turn around and do it again. So you're kind of stuck in one spot almost all the time. Uh, and this way I'd be able to, in the summer, when there is no leaves, I'd be able to keep the bike trail clear, which is a big concern of mine, because I've always used the bike trail when there's anything on it. It's kind of a pain. But, uh, yeah, I just, I think it'd be a good, good addition to our equipment. And, uh, we will be the old equipment that we use right now to pick up leaves, we will be selling or trading in, but it sounds like we'll be selling. It'll be about thirty percent of the cost of what this is already. But, yeah.
And are we using our funds for this?
No.
No.
Nope. It's coming right out of the budget because of all the money that we've saved. There's a lot left.
But I really appreciate you giving us the price comparisons. That really helped me to determine, because before then I was like, uh-uh.
Right.
Uh-uh.
I understand that.
We bought for maintenance, you know, but sure. And so in seeing those comparisons, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a riding leaf blower up to eleven thousand dollars.
Motion by Noah. Support by Michael. Any other discussion or questions among the board?
Can you change the speed that it blows out?
Yes. So there's like, this is really cool unit, actually. It's like full bad mode. But, uh, it's got, it's got three different directions you can blow it. So like, you know, normally, like any type of push or pull or rider leaf blower, it only goes one direction. It's got three spouts on it. It's got an electric joystick on it that changes which spot it comes out of. So if you're going along the fence line, you can blow forward and pull it right out of your way. Instead of having, you know, like you're trying to teeter the whole time. But, yeah, it's got, it's it's a rider, so it also has different speeds. But there's flaps on every nozzle that you can open and close depending on how much you want to cover. And I made sure that it wouldn't be too much, because there's a unit above this that I was telling you the state park was blowing their sod on.
Right. That's what I'm concerned about, um, cemetery.
Right. But it's it's a lot of items for sure, but also when the leaves hit heavy, they're not supposed to be artificial, right?
Right. Everything's supposed to be pretty hard.
We'll we'll feather that lightly, I'm sure.
Anything else? Roll call vote.
Noah. Yes. Michael.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Christie. Yes. Tracy. Yes. Scott.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next we're into the two items that we added. Uh, the first one is any ground. And so the motion should at least include and to the choice one bank accounts. We might as well include the M-class and other bank accounts in case of running into something else. But it's almost the reverse of when we removed Lexi from the council.
Right. I make motion to add any ground to choice one, M-class and other bank accounts.
Motion by Noah. Support by Christie. Any discussion among the board? Here and done. Roll call vote.
Noah. Yes. Christie. Yes. Lee.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Tracy. Yes.
Motion passes. Next we have our next added item, which was the proclamation for Constitution Week. And so this is the same one we did last year, except for it's the thirty, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-sixth anniversary, it's the thirty-fifth. And, uh, this specifically had been requested as part of the Daughters for the American Revolution, uh, some sort of outreach that they have. So it's pretty decent, fairly simple little proclamation, essentially saying that Constitution Week is from September seventeenth to September twenty-third, uh, which is the same as the federal government. Yeah, just a motion to approve the proclamation.
So I make a motion to approve proclamation.
Constitution.
For the Constitution Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-third.
Perfect. Motion by Noah. Support. Support by Christie. Any other discussion among the board? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next we are on to our discussion items, the first one being the broadband study. And I include this in the reference packet that's posted online. It was a study done at the county level. And I went to the presentation. Normally those don't get released publicly, because there's, I don't know if there's a good place to release them publicly. So I like to include in the back here, so everyone kind of gets the information that I'm getting on these things. And essentially, there's a plan at the state level for everyone in the state to have internet access and be connected to broadband by twenty thirty, from what I hear. But basically, I'm point to do that. Specifically, in the township, there are two proposals, uh, for charter to expand and mercury to expand. These are essentially nothing's changed over the last couple of years, right? Last I went through broadband updates. Uh, these are going to happen in the next few years, but probably not for twenty twenty-five, as far as I can tell. And that was part of a federal funding program that they applied for, um, Comcast would not uh, participate in that one. That's why it's chartering mercury. Uh, although I've heard through the great volume that it's falling, uh, through on some of the contracts as well. Uh, so hopefully, hopefully, it still continues as far as its expansion goes. There is an FCC map, uh, through the fence that can be objected to if there's areas that essentially on this map say they have service, but they actually don't have service. I went through, it's probably, it's probably around eight months ago now, and objected to the areas that didn't have service for Dalton Township. So anyone can go on there, uh, if they so choose as well. Any anything from the board on that? I reached out to a bunch of companies. At one point, I reached out to fifteen companies, trying to get service expanded. Uh, the one is specifically in Uago, and I reached out to them. The question was, why was reaching out to them? It's like, we're not that far away. You could hyphenate your name into Muskegon, but, uh, didn't want to do that. So so there's there's slow expansion happening there. But it seems like it's going to continue. Next we have the housing study, similar in that there was a housing study done at the county level, included the information in the reference packet from a presentation that I went to. And it really just says that the housing market is tight and probably will remain so for a while.
Some do.
Once, uh, they're hoping to use at the county level through, uh, greater Muskegon economic development, uh, to entice builders to build more, uh, through throughout the county. And building at any level actually eases up the market, because essentially, I mean, it's really tight in the rental market and and the owner market. And what's happened, it's gotten so tight that people with a higher income can bid more on lower-priced houses, because they have to get into a certain area, and there might be a house available. And so that's that's pushing the people that can't afford it out of the bottom of the market. So hopefully we see some some building continuing in this. Uh, very weird over the last few years, uh, as far as the economy goes. And I've talked to multiple economists on it, and no one can seem to predict it well. So I've been wrong. They've been wrong. Paying on the housing study. Next we have Daniel's Road Blocking. And so this has come up a couple of times. We've we've heard, uh, at board meetings about it. I've talked to people for for quite a while. It's a similar problem that I have in a number of areas in the township. Uh, the people along this road have spoken to me the most about it. There's a couple of different issues. One, people go into the woods essentially where the road ends. Uh, they'll go into the woods and the whole food traffic. Some people go back there, they'll dump stuff, they'll dump tires and beds and and all sorts of things. Uh, and then also there's a heavy drug dealing. So we go back there and we'll make drug deals and come back out and that type of thing as well. In this specific case, yeah, that little turnaround at Daniel's, basically, you just go past it. Uh, specifically in this case, there's also seen, been seen a number of times, people wandering around the area, uh, with axes or machetes. Uh, some some of those things as well. Uh, it gets, you know, kind of kind of wild as far as that goes. In this case, uh, there was request by a few citizens to block off the road. Now, I didn't think we would be able to do that. Uh, but I told them, you know, like, basically, like everything, like, I'll check. And so I checked with the road commission, expecting a no. The road commission said that we could after their turnaround. So you can see on this little snapshot from Google Maps, on Daniel's, there's a little turnaround there. They use that for when they plow. That's as far as they plow. They turn around there. So after that, the trail continues. From the aerial view, it just looks like woods, of course, but it's continuing there. And so if we could block off that part of the trail, there's different ways you can do that. Obviously, a fairly cheap economical way would to be someone hire someone with a loader to push up a couple of pounds of dirt, maybe put in some large wooden posts. Essentially, you could still get through there for walking, biking, that type of thing. But hopefully, people wouldn't be at least running the cars and trucks out there and that type of thing. Should noticeably cut down on dumping, I would assume, um, but not one hundred percent certain. It would be a fairly economical way to do it. And it essentially would be a little bit of an experiment to see if that type of thing is effective or works. But I want to see the board's opinion on whether we should pursue something like that or not.
That's the other thing. He's not here anymore, but if something did happen, I know it's not like it doesn't need a road or nothing, but if something does that, get it back there.
Correct. So I checked with him a few months ago, uh, when I was talking about this. And one, uh, poppy way from the north comes down there, and so they still have access there. And that, if the road gets worse, turns into two tracks down in the area that we're talking about. Um, but still, they could come in from there if you're working on forest fire, that type of thing, where you're trying to get bigger stuff down, but really wouldn't be able to. where you're trying to get bigger stuff down, but really wouldn't be able to get big trucks back there anyways. If you're looking at rescuing someone out of the woods with a medical issue, that type of thing, uh, in this case, we would, you know, make a, a small enough opening that trucks and things wouldn't be able to get through, like the Rokon would still be able to get through. And that pulls a trailer so you can carry someone out from there as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see the map. Can I see that?
Yeah.
Just curious, what are you talking about?
Yeah, it's on, there, it'll be on the right side of that sheet.
Maybe someday you can hook up that computer, put it right there so all of us can see what's going on.
We could. I mean, it's posted online, so if anyone wants to look at it.
Big screen. Big screen.
We could. We could have a screen come down right in front of me. You guys wouldn't have to look at me anymore.
Yeah, you got people walking around with shitty axes. It's important to know what, what you're talking about.
I don't think it's a safety term.
Not often stable. Other complaints are.
Cool. Those are all this property back in, you know?
Yes, uh, so there, there's neighbor just to the north of that turnaround there. They obviously have a house. That's from the south of that turnaround, there's one small piece owned by someone privately, uh, but the rest of this going back in here is owned by the township. Oh. So, which, so.
Like an exit store.
Correct. So if there was a piece back here, um, that's why I checked with the road commission and I was expecting them to reject. So if there was a piece back here that they were worried about someone getting access to, the road commission would have said, no.
Excellent.
I think it's because we own all the property that this said, okay, in this sense. Why say we move forward?
I, yeah, I agree. Like, I had to have a machine, it's too close to mine.
Well, and so what I would do, uh, is I'll plan on bringing it to a board vote, um, for next month, just because we're playing with roads, you know, and it, it's important. Uh, so, and I don't think we probably want to make a thing that just says, you know, Jeff can fluctuate roads. So.
Just drop the tree, bro.
People have talked about it, and I think in that case, a lot of people would just drive over. So.
Do like those cement stations that Chief has in front of his house and back there, they can't park, you know?
Correct. Yep.
If you put those there far enough apart, and like they'd be back there by foot, bike or Roka.
Oh, I like that.
But it would be, that would cost somebody, that would be like just a couple of stumps, you know? So.
Yeah. Yeah, we can play with it. Cool. All right, next are the gypsy slash spongy moths. I assume it'll take one generation for that name to turn over, so it's attached to the gypsy moths myself.
Yeah, gypsies way better than spongy.
Spongy fruit moths. So there were, we had two work sessions on this for the public, uh, the public, some people from the public that were highly interested in it were organizing a debate. Um, debates really didn't come off, and we were right in the middle of transitioning the board. And so I set them up as official work sessions. That's why they were set up in the odd way, because we had five board members at the time. I wasn't sure, you know, who was going to show up as their recruiting people and didn't want to end up with an illegal forum and an illegal meeting. And so the, the meetings were very different between the two groups of people. In the first group, everyone was for treatment and discussed several different avenues for treatment. Uh, there was interest, obviously, in having aerials and dumping, that type of thing. But even that meeting largely tended towards the idea of treating individual properties from the ground and then just using the fourteen grand we have, um, potentially some people applying for other grants and that type of thing to continue that program. In the second meeting, uh, there was more interest in not doing it. And a different proposal came from that meeting as well, which was the proposing to refund the fourteen grand back to the taxpayers. And so discussed a few things on that, checked with the lawyer. Lawyer's answer wasn't particularly firm in either way on this, not that it's a clear cut case. Um, we probably could, uh, send the money back or, or give a discount on parcels. Because this money was collected starting in the late nineties, you know, you're probably not realistically getting it back to the people that paid it in many cases. Some people still live in the same house, um, since the nineties, but some people don't. So it'd probably be mixed. It'd be relatively small amounts, maybe a couple of dollars a parcel, maybe, um, for getting back to. Really, this was passed through as a millage, so there was a public road on it. And so it's intended to be used for whatever purposes that vote was on. Uh, there would not be, need to be a vote of who sent the money back, as, as far as we can tell. Um, but ideally you would use funds that you have a public vote on or whatever the people voted for on. In this case, there just happens to be fourteen grand left in this fund that we haven't, you know, I've had the meetings, I've had surveys and stuff like that. Um, but we haven't done anything with it over the last couple of years. And every year, uh, the DNR has come out with something that said this was the last year for it in the area, and they have it again this year, and I hope it is true this time. Um, but, and it fluctuates through the area. So I get different complaints from people. I get complaints from people that it's been a problem at their place for a couple of years. I, I've also had people call me this year and say that it was their first year of having an issue, because I said it was an issue for a few years, and they said, no, it wasn't. It was my first year having an issue. Uh, so it fluctuates a little bit on local level and on the mass level throughout the state, which has been trouble. But I wanted to see which way the board was interested in going on this, which avenue the board was interested in pursuing. And then we can schedule it for next spring because it's a next spring issue, but I'm going to be working on it now.
Right. Well, I know I have my share of these moths, um, and yet I had a lady that lives over in Newago, and she said their acorns were down because of the gypsy moth destroying the trees, which means deer don't get fed and squirrels and, so I mean, there's, there's a lot to really consider with this thing, and there's just quite this.
It's the birds eat the moths.
It's the birds eat the moths.
Their chickens won't eat them either.
They won't, not those ones.
And nature, nature plays itself in a variety of ways. Nature always wins eventually.
I, I would say that we go forward with holding the money for people who request spring.
Let's, let's, but let's do public comment at the, at the end, otherwise, otherwise it gets muddled. And my sound system, which we paid a decent amount of money for, is, is only okay. So, that's not the, not the greatest, but nevertheless, uh, yeah, what was, what was your perspective?
So just, just that we hold the fence and use it as people request, should be used for what it was set aside for. My feelings.
I, I'd be in favor of, if it's a small amount, of returning it back to the taxpayers, just not dealing with it at all. If that, if it's fifteen bucks a property, fifteen bucks a property. And then people can do their own thing.
Well, we had a problem with it this year. We didn't call and ask for anything, but are, are we going to have funds down the road that'll be there for it?
No. So thi- this was a specific millage that was voted on in the late nineties and was supposed to be collected for a few years. It took me quite a while. Actually, uh, I've been looking for it for the last few years and eventually did find the specific wording for this. So it can only be used for, uh, gypsy moth treatments. Um, but I haven't seen, you know, the exact follow-up of that. Found out that it wasn't voted on because the paperwork wasn't incorrectly, uh, in ninety-eight when it was supposed to be voted on, but it, but it did pass after that. And so the fund's been sitting there for a while. There were treatments at that time, that late nineties, early two thousands. And then there was a one-year issue with it in the area, uh, in two thousand nine. So in the late nineties, early two thousands, the, the county had coordinated a lot of stuff. Uh, in two thousand nine, sounds like they, they had done some as well. When we had those meetings, this was a couple, a couple of years ago now, we had a meeting here of a bunch of the, of people from different municipalities surrounding and discussed how we were going to do it. Uh, the county wasn't interested in coordinating anything because it had been, uh, quite a mess before. And they got harassed to the point where the point person on it, uh, said he actually didn't go to Myers for a month. Uh, he basically stayed in his house, um, because people hated him so much over, he's supposed to solve the gypsy moth problem and he didn't, so people didn't like him. And, uh, so they've just been sitting there. It's a relatively small amount as far as it goes. And so we're not actively collecting or putting aside anything for gypsy moth treatment. This is just the leftover that's been there for years.
Right. Well, I'm just thinking that if we run into a problem next spring and we've given this money back, then we gotta figure out where we're going to get the money.
If we're going to do something.
If we're going to do something.
Correct, yep, because we have been treating for, for the last few years. And so.
We'd have to come up with a program because, you know, I've got twenty acres, so if I am first in line and I want to treat my property and it's, I don't have any plans.
First come, first served. No, it's common. Right, and it could go pretty fast. So, but what I can do, if, so if the board's pretty split on it, is I can write it up. I'll write it up for a decision item for next month for a vote. Um, but I can write it up in both ways.
Yep.
Uh, and then that gives another month for people to debate it, people to debate it out there, um, everyone to talk to everyone and determine which way they want to go on those things. Does anyone have a different proposal? I think the idea of doing the, the fourteen thousand dollars, using it for people requesting the treatment only on their own property from the ground, seems reasonable and decent, and then sending it back essentially to all of the parcels. I, I'll have to look at that more because we have to look at the legality and stuff.
How much is it going to cost to send it back? The envelopes, the checks, the ink, the tie, the preparation, the stamps, the.
Right.
Everything, you're gonna.
A decent.
A decent amount.
If we can put it as a credit on the tax bill, then it does something.
Thank you, thank you for thinking.
No additional costs.
Yep. And so, so I have to look at how, how that functions.
Can you legally do that? Take, I mean, can you legally take away that possession by the county? And that, and that's going to have to show as an income coming in.
Right, we have the money to assess. So we've got that money in a bucket. The other money, the, the millages that get assessed are getting paid in full. They're not getting reduced by anything. The money that they're getting reduced by, say, ten dollars is coming from different, from, from the township.
All right, thanks, Senator.
Right. So I'll, but I can write it up in both ways to give people more time to think about it and everything. If we're going to move on to treatments, you know, I want to work on getting that arranged for the spring. Um, you know, if we're going to move on taxes, um, then I will start working on legality and how, how exactly that would work. Um, correct. So just on the details.
Sounds good.
Duct tape works.
Duct tape, yes, a lot of.
Duct tape, that's where the duct tape, it's getting people.
It works. It's, if you have money.
As the base of the truth.
You reverse the duct tape so it's sticky and wrapped around your tree, and when they climb up your tree, they get stuck to it.
They've done that for years. It works.
Duct tape does solve this problem.
I just saw it through this.
Duct tape also a problem, usually money with.
Because that rolls on trees, right? Yeah.
So, we, we have some cotton there as well. So, next is meeting minutes. So, and this is, uh, just a problem of something, some things not getting done at times, right? Meeting minutes being one. I, so I tried to just kind of solve the problem internally, which is why I wasn't updating the board on it, um, right? So that's, that's it in the public. Um, so that's, that's kind of on me. Um, and so this is just, uh, from the lawyer, essentially emphasizing the importance, um, in the Meetings Act of getting the meeting minutes done on time. This awareness thing. All right, next we have CPL. We discussed this, uh, before, so, you know, in terms of subject, obviously, for people. What I've included in here is the section from the employee handbook, which is a section on workplace violence. And all, all I was doing here, uh, under prohibited activities, it's number three, and I did, uh, red outlining, red, uh, lining through what I proposed eliminating. And so it just eliminates the, the section on, uh, open carry, which is often used for people without a CPL, um, although it can be used in this literal, uh, capacity of having something open as well. And then I eliminated the line in here, which has a sentence, uh, if authorized to do so by the township supervisor, which essentially puts it in the sole expression of the township supervisor. And so these changes would be very minor from what we already have, where absolutely could make large change. But these are very minor, uh, proposals would make it so that if you want to carry as township employee, get your CPL. And then you can. Um, if you don't have your CPL, then it's not authorized in here. That's the way these changes look.
So we are allowing concealed carry, not open carry?
Correct. So, but with eliminating the section on open carry here, um, it's just saying that someone can carry if they get their concealed permission.
Gotcha. Okay.
Are we just talking about the board?
No, we are not talking about the board. Uh, so the board ends up being a special aspect in itself, uh, because I talked with the lawyer about it because we're elected officials, so it's, it's a little bit different. Um, in this case, we're talking about staff, um, personnel, employees, you know, maintenance is probably who it applies to. Now, now, it applies in general. So it, it applies to anyone here in the office, uh, you know, if one of the admin systems wants to carry, um, there at the front desk, or if, uh, employee, right, maintenance wants to carry, uh, out in the field, something like that.
Yeah, we get fair on the, so.
That the article of concealed carry, by the way, even though it's open, the possibility of an article of clothing being able to cover a square inch of the weapon is considered concealed carry. And I do have less than pay on mine.
Okay, so.
I would have to have my shirt tucked in with a belt secured for it to be considered open carry, no chance of the weapon being obstructed at all. Just, just a heads up, so.
Yep, I'm just, and I'm reading the sentence, employees with a concealed weapons permit may carry a concealed weapon as permitted by state law.
Yep.
So we want it to stay that way, not say carry a weapon?
I got you, yeah, because I eliminated the open up there. You're saying because it says concealed weapon here.
Right, that's, I, that's just.
Yeah, uh, it's a good question. So, and I'm open, open to the, the board's opinion on this?
So there, the first sentence, employees with a concealed weapons permit may carry a concealed weapon as permitted by state law. So, but we're, but he's saying they can open carry as long as they have a concealed weapons permit. So if it's open carry, then it's not concealed.
That's just a good idea.
No, I've heard, yeah.
Just a good idea. Right, we live in dangerous times and, and you just don't know what people are going to do. And, you know, right people with right motives, they can prevent a lot of deaths from happening. And you've got people that are irrational, how to do bodily harm.
Nice.
I think, I guess, I got a question, like, so you're just saying you want to get rid of that so you can open or conceal, you're saying?
Right, if that's what we're saying we're allowing, I, then I want the, the rest of it to be consistent.
Right.
It's all, I mean, if we, if we're not allowing it, then, then that's fine. And it was, because I did see your weapon.
We have CPL, I'm, I'm ignorant here, but yeah, if you have CPL, you can open carry?
No, you can open carry legally like you have a CPL as long as you have all, like, your shirt tucked in, you can't be wearing a coat. It's, so people think if you try to cover it, it's, if there's the possibility of an article of clothing covering over a square inch of the weapon, it is considered concealed, even if you have it open like this. Just because I'm not tucking in my sweatshirt and there's a chance that it could cover it, just because there's a chance means you need to have a CPL.
Right. Well, having.
You can open carry in state Michigan.
With obviously CPR.
Yeah.
Right, what happened, but if you have a CPL, then you have to be carry concealed. No, you could go either or. Either or. Well, and he's technically, by what he just described, he is carrying concealed.
Yeah, technically, yeah. It, it's, it's pretty much open carry, but he's permitted to do it.
Right.
Well, so the question becomes on this, so the major restriction here, especially we eliminated the concealed weapon, a concealed word there, actual one that I did draw a line through, uh, then do we want to say you have to have the CPL? Because that, that is still what this is requiring, which I, I think is a reasonable thing to say, look, you went through some sort of process, you went through some sort of minimal training, um, to get a CPL, you've at least put some effort into it rather than just any employee can carry?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Background checking, there's a lot.
Yeah. I think it's a reasonable, right, it's not, it's not very much of a barrier, you know? I have my sixty-seven year old mother, who's never touched a gun before she was sixty, she just recently got her CPL. It's not a huge barrier. So, yeah, I was motivated by defund the police movement, so. Uh, also in here, it, it doesn't touch this other stuff, um, but firefighters are specifically dressed in a different venue, and they are their own separate thing, and I talked about it with the chief, and I told him, you know, I just won't touch the way that the firefighters are dressed in here because I think it's reasonable to leave that with the fire department.
Okay.
Would it be necessary to, for verbiage to say we're not going to cover the cost of CPL or the renewal of CPL for any employees?
I, I don't think it's needed to say that we're not covering that if, and I, and I had inquired into this, because Christie said at some of the treasurer's meetings, right, you're covering some of that. If we wanted to cover it, we would need wording to that effect. Um, with these changes, it just means if you want to do it, you can do it on your. Any other changes, adjustments, questions? They'll bring that for a vote at the next meeting. Alright, next we have cell tower. So we, we saw this before, last year, this company was contracted to try to renegotiate cell tower contracts. And I included the original contract, amended contract, and proposed contract on the reference packet for large, so there's a piece about there. With the, with the study, you said I included contracts, the reference packet was reasonably thick. But the basic proposal here is reducing their costs over time so that the cell tower service stays in that cell tower. It's very hard, because, you know, we're working through a different company that obviously they're getting paid for results of renegotiating these things, to tell how important it is. The first time that we went through this, which leave involved probably five of us, maybe, right? But the first time we went through this, we actually, we approved doing something and it was based on like a sheet like this, where they had some numbers, I talked with them, you know, they're like, maybe we'll drop service if we don't pay the cut rate, something like that. And after the board had approved it, that was when they would give me the full contract. And then the full contract had some other stuff in it that, that was really restrictive and I, I didn't think it was great. And so, correct, so we didn't, I didn't sign it, because it didn't seem to have the same proposal here. That's why they sent me the full contract this time, because they said there was a problem last time. And so we can, we can look at that, but I have no good way to tell how serious of an issue it may be if the service is actually going to get dropped or not. You know, they could be completely bluffing, or they could be extremely serious. And I, I just have no good way to tell. And we obviously don't want to have less service.
What are the other supervisors saying about these contracts?
Oh, that's a good question. I haven't, I haven't asked them in our supervisors' meeting, that hasn't come up as, as a discussion, I don't know. So, so I haven't heard, which I could send some messages around and see if anyone knows anything else.
Is it at the end of automobile road?
Correct, so a little south of the village.
Right.
If you come down automobile, you'll pass the power lines, continue south. I mean, any other thoughts on this? Yeah, I can reach out to other supervisors and see, you know, I haven't heard of anywhere dropping a cell tower service like that as a major issue, because I assume I would have heard, because that would be a major issue for some people. We've had inquiries about another cell tower going in. There's a number involved township, the township only has the one. And they're, they're in different areas, but near the middle of the township in northern section, there is kind of a dead aspect of there. And recently a company inquired about doing one on township property near Goose Egg Lake. And so I said, we'd be open, you know, so I proposed a lot, raised the board, that type of thing. I met them out there and talked to them and that type of stuff, we haven't gotten a proposal yet. So as far as I can tell, it seems like companies are still interested in putting in towers and moving forward. So the, the reality, if, if someone is going to drop service from a tower, you know, I can't tell if that's really true or not.
Verizon Wireless.
Correct. Yeah, Verizon Wireless on an American tower corporation tower, and then negotiating for them is this MP seven.
Originally with a thousand in the month, is that what it was?
That's a proposal on the rep reduction. I can't remember offhand. I had details, you know, before. And then there was an escalation in there. Oh. And so it's moved up from there and it's largely the escalation that is what they don't like, is, is the high escalation and the way it's advanced over the years.
We're currently at one thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Fourteen eighty-eight, forty-nine.
Yeah, and so there could be a one-time signing bonus of fifteen thousand dollars, a reduction to one thousand three hundred and fifty, huge reduction with twelve percent term escalation. Whether adjustments, the idea of proposing that it continues or revues out to twenty-sixty-three.
Isn't one of the things proposed, the escalation?
This was for, at least on the short sheet, it's for escalation.
Okay.
So, but there was a higher escalation before, so the escalation ends up being a decent part of the negotiation sometimes. And other thing is one-time payment of three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
That's supposed to last all day, so...
Yes. So that would, that would just be a lump sum now. Utilities, long, long-term things. So I, I can reach out to other supervisors, see if it's worth proposing the back of this company. Does anyone, anyone on the board want me to follow up on anything else with that? Want to do anything in particular with it? Alright. Next, vacation policy. So this is really just an FYI for what's coming up. Next month I'll have a proposal in here for voting on. I've included the current vacation policy, partly because Scott and Michael have seen it, we've seen it at the board before, but the board didn't end up actually making an adjustment before, so it's just the way the policy has been, which there are some things that need to be adjusted in there. We've been having staff meetings and talking through the different options. There's been a decent amount of options considered, and so essentially we'll have a staff recommended policy coming to the board for them.
What changes specifically are we looking at?
I, I've been included in there, I just wrote up that a couple, a couple of days ago, near the end of last week. And so it's a completely different concept, it'd be, it won't look like this, it'd be a different take on vacation policy. But some form of accumulating time by the amount of time that you work at certain rates, depending on how that's calculated. The fire department, because we're adding full-time firefighters, they would have vacation and stuff, but have a separate policy for them. That's a completely different shifts than would be worked in the township. Do have a certain amount of rollover still, but capped in some way. You have a certain amount of money that could be cashed out at the end of the year, but potentially capped in some way as well. So those are some of the, some of the major, I would say.
And calling it all one instead of personal time?
Correct.
Of vacation time, it's all going to be just paid time off.
Or PTO.
PTO.
Exactly, so simplify the...
And there, it's not going to have sick leave or...
Correct. Correct, and then we have the juror assembly. So Al has requested this be considered by the board, I suggest that we bring it for a exception item. And so the quoted section in here is the explanation that he sent, there's a lot more information out there about it. I have known a few people over the last few years that have talked to me about it. It's, it's a program ideologically, strategically, and tactically that I'm decently hesitant about, because I think it's setting up an alternate government, which creates conflict. And obviously, I took this position in an attempt to reform this government, so it's a different philosophical take.
That's your opinion.
Correct. And so, but this, this request is for them to be able to hold meetings here, jury meetings for, for this group and that type of thing.
Actual jury meetings.
And so, and I said, you know, that would, that would need more approval in some way. So, and I mean, and Al, see if anyone has questions about it as well.
I'll speak on it briefly in the...
Actually, if you would, if you would like to speak on it now, if you have a brief thing about it?
Okay.
Yeah, just brief us on it.
I'm part of the, Al Richards, six-three-seven-five, state road. I'm part of the juror, juror assembly of the Dure here in Mesquite County. And it's, it's a, a group of individuals that understand what the original form of government was here in the United States. And we are making an effort because we see what's happening currently, of course, in our own country. You know, we could potentially lose everything without, without hearing to ourselves. And most people feel that they're incapacitated, they don't know what to do, they don't even know how to go about doing something, they feel as though they're powerless. But we know what rights we have as individuals in this country that was given to us by our founding fathers. So we know the course of action that we can take in regards to civil law, not corporate law, not legalistic law, that has been given to us now since the Civil War, when everything transitioned and we lost our, a lot of our personal rights. Now everything is generated by revenue and it's corporate, it works through contracts. And we all have signed contracts with this entity, and we don't even know what we're signing a contract to. But we want to drive our cars, so we sign a contract to get a driver's license. Now we have a contract and they actually have deed to our vehicle, but I don't even know that. So where, my original request was to, potentially at some time in the future, we may need the whole jury. And we already have a jury structure established here locally, and we're gaining ground, we're getting more people involved with it. Right now we're pursuing our own sheriff, okay? That would be, that would be our law enforcement individual in regards to civil law. Alright, and we've already had cases, one through the juror assembly system, one in, one in Colorado where a woman, you know, she had to leave her residence for an extended period of time. I don't know what period of time, but this is an actual case in Colorado. And when she came back, she had a squatter in her home. And, you know, the person wouldn't leave. And so what she did was, what is the right thing to do? She assembled twelve of her neighbors as a jury. Then she asked the local sheriff, who was, I believe, attached to the corporate structure. We're not saying, we're not advocating getting rid of law altogether, we're advocating going back to the original form of law. And if they want to continue to operate in their corporate system and do their commerce and collect their fees and everything else, we're not saying they can't do that, we're not going to try to overthrow their system. What we're doing is we're re-establishing civil law in our own private jurisdictions. Those that are willing to do it and go about that process, and those that understand their liberties and freedoms that they've been given through the Constitution. So in this case, she got, she assembled twelve jurors of her neighbors. This is how it's supposed to work. Government for the people, by the people, right? So they asked the sheriff to come in just to maintain order. He did, he came in, he sat in. They found this person guilty, of course, by taking this woman's home through trespass. And the, the verdict was that that person needed to be removed. So the way they used to do it is how they did it, right? You have a marshal, you can deputize people. You go ahead and go there and remove the person. That's how it works. It's government for the people, by the people.
But what do you do when they refuse still, I mean, physically, I mean, really, what do you really do?
What do they do with that? Alright, so I'm going to, right now, I, I don't, I don't want, there's so much I can...
So, there's, there's a ton on this, right?
Yeah.
And so, so I mean, my basic opinion on it, I'm, I'm not involved in juror assembly, right? So considered it, I was approached about it before and decided not to be. So, because that's the inherent conflict that I see setting up, right? So I mean, it's very similar to, to the founding fathers in some way, but the outcome of the founding fathers is war that you have to win, right? And so I consider it a dangerous path in the United States, would have to be in much worse shape than it is now for me to pursue that path.
Wow.
Wow.
Wow. Well, can I continue into my public portion of the comment? Because that's what's...
Let's see if the board wants to comment on this or move into the second public comment. So, but yeah, I think there's, I think there's a huge misunderstanding about how bad life is a lot of times in other places in the world now. But human history is not, is not fun, right? Like, I mean, death is the norm, suffering until death is norm, absolutely true. And so the fact that we have an immense amount of peace, prosperity, and liberty at the same time still, is not something to like shirk off. It's impressive what the United States has been able to hold on to as, as far as benefits to people. And so war probably not be as fun as our current existence.
Well, consider this one fact, you worked from January to June for nothing.
Correct, yeah, yeah, there's taxes, taxes exist. I think if you're going to have wars until you don't have taxes, you'll just spend...
Over fifty percent of your income right now, taxes, laws, regulations.
You're just going to spend a lifetime in war and then die, right? So, but nevertheless, does the board have anything on this? No, we'll go into our public comment, second public comment.
So you're talking about just using the building or...
That would be a request, it's, it would be possible for the, the juror, juror assembly, on occasion if necessary...
To use this room.
To use this room when something else is not going on, that's inconvenience, what, what the usual business is here in the building, but to use this as a location for a potential trial or a meeting.
Yeah, it would be nice if they could get Mr. Javi out of his property.
That's, 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 that's it right there. I can, there's twelve people easily that would...
That would have all...
That's right. He's not going anywhere without a gunfight, so you still don't solve it.
And actually, I support what you're doing because it's good.
Right, so it gets very messy, alright?
Rent the building to them.
Right, so on, on this, so... Yeah, but let's hold it, alright? So, I, I mean, it's not that, it's not that difficult, right? Just like be quiet for a little while. So if we could get the board's opinion on what, if you would like to me to bring a proposal for voting for next month, on if we're going to let them use this room or not? Is that, I mean, that's really the item in question.
Sure. We would have to go into a contract to do it if, if that were to take place, but I, I'm not in favor of it for a lot of reasons. You're, you're bringing conflict here that isn't... Yeah, you know, it would have to be after hours, it would have to be, you know, all these things, and we're not in as much control over it.
Well, with Fridays off, number one, the building would be built on Fridays. And as township constituents, this is a township owns the building by the people. I would be for it myself.
Well, my argument is we already have laws in place, using your example. If I come home, if I come home from vacation and there's somebody in my house, what am I going to do? If they're not a threat to me, I'm calling the local sheriff, and the local sheriff, if he's doing his job, is going to come and arrest that person and remove them. I don't have to gather twelve of my neighbors to have a meeting and, and weeks later we kick somebody out, they're out that night. Now, if they're a threat...
Are they out there?
They are.
Are you sure?
One way or another, they're out of my house. Because if they're a threat to my family, guess what? Well, let's say, they say you sold them the property, or you deeded them the property. I didn't. Your, your scenario is they were in your home... And they were squatting in my home when I came home. I was gone for three months. They have no rights to... I was an arbitrary lot of time. I was gone, I came...
Yeah, but anyways, so, correct, correct. Well, which is why, also why I like to have the, the separate discussions, because I'll, I'll talk with people for, for hours, right?
People not letting somebody else do all your paperwork for you.
Yeah, I, I kind of liked...
Let's, let's, we're, we're very, the steps are very simple, right? Like, the steps are very simple, it's not complex, right? So right now, we have a discussion item for the board on the juror assembly. Next, we have public comment, right? The one is step one, the one is step two, right? So, but any, anything else... So, but any, anything else from the board? All right, so now we'll move into public comment, and I know you want to jump up here, Kim.
Yeah. Yeah, roll. Kim, so you're kind of for this area. I'm gonna introduce to you the Meskeen County County Communicator. It's a new publication from the county. And I want to go over just a few items in here briefly. Number one, there is a celebration at the Meskeen County Resource Recovery Center. Their 50-year annual, or 50-year celebration since they began. Says, "Join us for celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Meskeen County Resource Center on Saturday, September 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m." This is a family-friendly event. We'll have various clubs hosting events on site, food trucks, ambassador animals, tours, and much more. The next item is Meskeen County Marquette Campus out at Baker College. Now has eight different departments that are located there. It'll be some period of time before the rest of them move just because Baker still has some of their schooling in there. So it could be another year or so before the rest of those move. Downtown Meskeen County Council Hall of Justice is getting a new curtain wall. I don't know if you saw that, the building was basically falling apart. And so they're replacing the whole face of the building. Plus the fourth war, they're building out new offices because they're setting up a court system. So that was all, those were all funded with our funding. We decided to use the money for infrastructure. Then we have Meskeen County Department of Veterans Affairs during the month of July with 350 veterans and/or their family members. State services from our department include assistance in forms for soldiers, sailors, relief, burial, service officers, food bank, housing, and many other forms of assistance for the pets. This is a page that shows your current Meskeen County Commissioners. You can take this home, put it in your refrigerator.
How often is this published?
Pardon me?
How often is this published?
It's gonna be a once a month deal.
Okay.
And the last page is a, basically a schedule. And it shows when all of the county commission meetings are happening downtown. It gives, for instance, Thursday, August 3rd, Public Works Meeting, dates and times. So, and we encourage the public to come to these meetings. You'll learn a lot coming to some of these committee meetings. The full word meeting, it's okay. But if you want to get in on a discussion, need to get into the committee meeting. That's when we talk about stuff, so. And that is, that's basically it. So I just want, I have just a few of these physical.
How would people sign up for this?
Well, I, I think what we're gonna probably have to do is get, you can get it at an electronic form, so we can send that out, an email. That's a document, everybody. So that's, I'm not sure where to find it on the website. That's okay.
It's somewhere on the website.
Yeah, it is, it is, so. And with that, thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you much, Kim. All right, who's next?
Robin, Wednesday, 2795. Just wondered, we've spent a couple months since people from the church that were involved with the civic center property. We haven't heard any more from them?
Correct, so what happened with that is that they had said they would put in a request for that property, and then we'd be looking at considering it. I talked with Matt Midian, they were good with that. And they, I gave them information, emailed them, and they've never put in a request. So that's, that's where that was.
So technically, the township owns the property. But we could still move forward to do something as far as a community center.
We could.
Even Liquid has a community center. I mean, we really need one, we really do, so. You know, I'm just, you know, maybe Christie can find us some grant money. Sure, I mean, because that would be something that's necessary. Because, you know, it wouldn't just be, I mean, we could use it for seniors, we could use it for voting. We definitely need more places where we can hold our voting and.
Where's that property?
It's right in, in Twin Lake, it's just. When you get the blanket light, turn on the riot center or whatever, whatever they actually call that. Yeah, 4th Street, it's the very, it's in the next block, it's a whole acre lot. And, yeah, well, yeah, because it's the civic center.
It's a square patch of grass.
They cut the grass, nobody does it anymore.
They cut the grass. I'm a little worried about how powerful those leaf things might, because I think it might be like a. Come here, it might be a liability. But anyway, it would be so nice to build a villa. Take, like I always say, our money, pop money out, they're what money? You know, I mean, what would it take really to build a halfway decent sized, full barn type building with insulation, do a kitchen, do bathrooms? And we could use it for our voting. We could use it for seniors, for bingo or whatever. You could use it for, you know, overflow meetings when you have. You could use it for a farmer market, you know? I mean, in the wintertime even, but I mean, I mean, it could be holiday. We used to do holiday stuff there, you know, so.
Halloween party for the kids.
Halloween parties for the kids, and they're not out on the streets. You know, they, we, they used to do Christmas parties, but anyway. But in the meantime, I mean, why couldn't the township run it out? For functions and make it pay for itself. And maybe we could even have a fund that could provide to put on the little community parties. So, I mean, you know, we don't have anywhere anymore. They used to do stuff at Twin Lake Park, but that hasn't happened in a lot of years. And then, you know, people got paid to get in the park if they don't have a sticker. So that's not real, you know, feasible. But I'm just gonna keep saying that we need to think about that, that slot should not be sold. It needs to be used, and we need a community center in Twin Lake.
I like it.
That's all I can say.
Thank you, pleasure.
Thank you.
I've got three items, I mean, I got nine minutes? Number one, I would. Would encourage you to top section, respond to legislative, elected official, give the reports that they can do early. Number two, my name is Bill Scott, 296 East Daniels. And the Daniels Park that we're talking about is where I live. Not only do we have to worry about people carrying machetes and all kinds of weapons, doing drugs, getting arrested the day before the supervisor came out. I would encourage you to possibly get the big concrete blocks. I wonder if you can use our money, negotiate a rental from the county, a dollar apiece for 25 years. But get those out there because if you put mounds there, you don't know the low level of brain cells these bozos have. 70 miles an hour, they'll jump it. They won't try to get through concrete barriers. And you need to spread about five out to where the private property against. I've talked to supervisors, but I encourage you to do this. Or 296 East Daniels, come sit in my yard. Watch these people on the gravel road go by 70 miles an hour or worse, come busting out of the woods at that, at that speed. We have kids, we have some little animals, cats, dogs. So I would encourage you to, to support that. And then, other things about the gypsy mods. It's a product called Tango Foot. I found this out from a really old resident, and I just purchased some off of Amazon. About my wife, that she's the Amazon person. But for $38, you can get the tape that goes around the tree and then the paste that you spread on that tape, it's called Tango Foot.
We use that in the 60s, early 70s.
Yeah, 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 it's still available. So I want $78 worth. My idea is, you've got $14,000. Buy a bunch of Tango Foot, put the word out that you have minimal available, so much for property. Hand it out and get rid of the money.
Thank you. Thank you. Especially when you ask me, I got.
Rachel Church, you've done a bunch of work around this street with Twin Lake Elementary Building. Back there, don't forget us. Got some bad news today. The Senior Navigator Services, which is paid to the 911 and senior village, or 211, 911, is a program that has been canceled. And they will no longer be coming out of library. And I know a couple people here who've come in and talked to those people and made use of that wonderful thing. So voice your opinion, say they want to have it back. They said they're transferring the money into another program. We don't know what, but we're basically gonna miss the Senior Navigation Services. You can contact Tango with and see where they're moving that to. So we would like to have those people come back as much as we can. And we have our newsletter, new newsletter for anybody who wants one. We've also got some bookmarks for our programs. Love to have you come in, say hi, say yes. The Twin Lake Historical Society meets every Thursday, Wednesday. And they're getting ready, they're trying to get ready to write a new history book. So if you have some history of Twin Lake in your family or yourself, come please share with us, we'd love to hear about it and maybe get it in our book. Thank you.
I was gonna say what she said. Twin Lake Historical Society is very interested in finding out as much history as we can to put in a, to put in a book. I've been getting things from, during the summer, from cottages. Cottages that were built in the early 1900s, they're still, those people are still, families are still coming. So that's the kind of thing we're looking for.
Yeah.
This will take years, I'm sure, I'll probably be dead before it's done.
And Heather is working with them on that project.
And we appreciate, we appreciate you helping us with this.
Hi, Al Richards, it's 375 State Room. I'm gonna make a request tonight. It has to do with, it can be controversial, but it's fine. You can open this up to a public discussion. But removing all ordinance. Now, Walkerville, Levitt Township has no zoning ordinances. They do have, I was contacted today by a supervisor up there at Levitt Township. She said, we discussed it. And she said they do have some other ordinances. And she did mention that she's not necessarily in favor of eliminating what they currently have as to be forced coming. But having contacted the lawyer that represents this group, someone contacted him for me. I appreciate your, your comment, Tracy, about we would have to come into a contract and order to access this building. You're proper representative of that government system because that's how they function. And you just reviewed that, everybody in this room, that they work through contract law, contract law, okay? And that has nothing to do with civil law. So anyways, after contacting the attorney, can you eliminate ordinances? Well, I told you, of course, if you can create an ordinance, it's logical that you can eliminate it. But the attorney was necessary to contact, here was the attorney's opinion. This is his opinion, which would support the current structure, the current system that we're functioning under MISO. Here's what he said, repeal isn't specifically covered, but would be handled as an amendment to the zoning ordinance to repeal it. You gotta think about, this is legally, so. There is no right in a township for a citizen's initiative to force an election to repeal the ordinance. So what they're saying to us, I don't need to explain it to you, I'm sure you already understand. But an individual like myself cannot force them to create an election to consider this. But that is what really needs to be done, is we have to put before the people. I'm sure I'm not the only one that feels the way I have to deal with it. I might be a minority, but I'm probably not the one that feels that. So anyways, the process would be initiated by the Planning Commission or by vote of the Township Board directing the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing for the people and make a recommendation to repeal the zoning ordinance. So you would vote to create, send the recommendation to the Planning Commission to have an open discussion. Not necessarily a recommendation that we do this, but just to send it to the Commission so that the people of our community can discuss this. And there's a lot to be discussed in this regard. So anyways, it's very possible for us to have this discussion about our own personal liberties and freedoms and what the possibilities are. So then, upon receiving the recommendation, the Township Board would determine whether to repeal the zoning ordinance. But after they get the recommendation from the zoning board, they're gonna vote on whether or not.
Am I correct? Correct.
They're gonna vote on whether or not they want to take that recommendation. Let's say the recommendation was to not remove the ordinance. And they would vote on that. But if they voted to remove the ordinances, there's still another process in place for those who feel like that's not the right decision. This gets kind of crazy, this gets kind of weird. It says, if the board goes to repeal the ordinance, then at the point upon petition of 15% of the votes passed for governor, a referendum would be held on the repeal.
Correct, so it's just a normal process for an ordinance.
For 15% of the community members that voted for the current.
In the last governor election.
Governor, who's in the current position of governor. So. It's kind of weird. But one way or another, you've got to go about establishing that opinion. So the board cannot put the matter to a vote of the citizens by board action. If the referendum is in favor of the repeal, the zoning ordinance is repealed. If the vote is otherwise, repealing ordinance is not adopted, and the zoning ordinance stays in effect. So I would end by saying, I'm asking you to do that, to send this to the zoning board for a public discussion of whether or not we, as a citizen, we'd like to do this, like to get rid of all these ordinances that we don't even know what they are, one. Two, as they've taken away our freedoms and our liberties where there was already law in place, and then they added to the law, ordinance after ordinance after law after law. And now we're so deeply buried in regulations that we don't know. There's no way we can know it all unless it's directly affecting us. And then, you know, we'd have to act at that point whether or not we even think of doing that. Many times, people don't. There's people in this room that have had, have been told that they can't do certain things because of the ordinance. And it didn't make any sense to a rational individual. Wish I could say myself, but the other person as well. And so that's my, that's my request tonight, that you send along to that commission, a request that they set up a times and then publicize it so the people of the community can come and discuss it. And let the chips fall as they may. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? I know, I, the second public comment, I do consider less important for, for staying on point or on time, so that people, you know, get the feeling that they can say their piece. I also offer to meet with anyone outside of those timeframes if they wanna have very long discussions, I, I have no limit on the length of the discussions.
Appreciate that.
And I think I have...
I don't have a few guests.
And I think there, there is an opportunity, if people I, I met with hell, if somebody wants to meet with one of us, they can, but I, I think we, I, I think if we're going to limit some people, we need to have the rule and, and limit to three minutes, and, or, or don't, and it's, you know, we can be here all night. I, I, I think that we need to, you know, wait three minutes, what, yeah. You can't, you can't hold people to three minutes at one meeting, and then the next meeting, let, let people talk as long as they want.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fair enough, so, and my natural inclination is to let people say their piece, but no one seems to be able to be quiet in a meeting, or to speak in a reasonable timeframe at a meeting. So we're just not gonna achieve human sanity in, in my term. Human insanity, we can achieve, and I would make the case that we have achieved it. What I think is reasonable to, to limit it, and then say that if anyone wants to meet outside of those times, that they can meet with me, and we can speak for six hours if someone wants, does it matter? So...
Much to the good.
What I can, is there any other public comments?
I already, I already, before cameras, I realize, you know, what they got themselves...
Sometimes they're fancy and simple, sometimes they're rough, this isn't as rough as it gets, it'll get...
I have some announcements.
So...
Okay, so I have some announcements that I want the trustees to know about. Okay, first of all, the MTA trustees professional development, I just wanna make sure you all got that, and nobody wants to go this year.
I'm not sure, I'm thinking about that, but I, but I, like, I have set up dog sitter and sitter.
Right.
So I'm standing on that.
Well, the trustees is October three and four, I know the clerks want filled up, so, and I haven't gone back to check to see if this is fully out or not, so let me know soon.
Okay, yep.
And then, there is a meeting of all Muskegon Township elected officials, so all the townships, all the elected officials get together, their meeting is September twenty-fifth, and I believe it's at Muskegon Charter Township, I will forward a, an email on that to everybody, and if there are items that we want to get onto the agenda, I thought maybe Spongy Mo might be one that we might wanna bounce off some other ideas.
Sure.
Um, so Cedar Creek, these are escaping me today, Cedar Creek Supervisor.
Linda, right?
Yeah, Linda Ayers.
Ayers, yeah, she's, she's sent out, I think it's six PM, but I'll, I'll send a notice out for that. They were trying to do it, they haven't, this is the first one since I've been here, they were trying to do it when there was a fifth Monday, that's how it was set up before, and then, the fifth Monday keeps happening on a holiday, and so they've not been able to... Oh, and I have payroll forms for the new trustees, I think those are all my communications today.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're in support, board by lead, motions by no one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is adjourned?
Yes, yep.